So is there a motion to approve the agenda adding 41 Ormsby Avenue in COVID procedures?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Agenda's approved. The meeting minutes from October 26th. Before, I don't know if anyone else has changes or not, but before we move to approve those, I need to have a motion that would modify the minutes by eliminating the reference and all the information pertaining to the executive session at that meeting on the 26th.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then I need to have a motion after, but I'll do it after we approve those minutes. So is there a motion to approve the minutes based on those changes?
Hold on.
Wait, Lisa?
So I'm sorry. The motion is to remove all reference to executive session in the minutes?
Yeah, to eliminate the reference and all information pertaining to the executive session on October 26th.
So can you send me exactly what you want in there? Because you seem to be reading something specific.
Yeah, I will.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So the minutes were approved, correct? Based on that change? Or was there a motion yet on that?
There was a motion in a second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So the one thing I wanted to add, and I can do it later down the road, but I might as well just take care of it now. If we could have a motion by one of the board members to approve Beaver Pond Gate being open year round on a trial basis?
Yes, so moved.
Second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. We can go on to open public comment. There's nobody else on, right, Greg?
Philip Anderson is here. I don't know if they have a comment or not. Other than that, I have Lyle, and Lyle will do, he's due up next.
Right. Phil, do you have any comment or anything to say?
Not at the moment.
Okay. All right. So going on to guests. We'll do, do you want to do Megan first? Because hers is just a contract, so.
If you want to, it's up to you.
Megan, that way we, you can, you don't have to sit through the meeting. No, no disrespect, Lyle, for listening to your presentation, but I figured if she wants to just have her contract reviewed, so. So we'll jump to the Proctor skating rink COVID operations?
Yep. We were, we, we have a rec meeting tomorrow, but we have discussed, and I discussed a little bit with you, Judy, and with Greg about our concern for COVID this year with the rink.
Right.
And it being open to everyone, to me, is a huge risk. And so I didn't know if opening it just to Rutland County residents would be an option. I know that it's federally funded, but this is different than any other year. Normally, we would welcome anyone and everyone in there. But I think with COVID and everything that's going on, we didn't know if it was an option either to do just Vermont maybe, and we'd have to ID, or do something like Rutland County just to cut down on some of the transmission. Because I don't want Proctor, we need to protect the rink and everyone in the town of Proctor. And that's Brian and I's concern about the rink this season. I figured I'd ask you guys before we went to the rec meeting tomorrow, so we could, you know, discuss what our options are. Or what you got, but we wanted your opinions because it's, you know, it's a town facility.
Well, this is great, because I was going to ask you questions regarding this since I saw you were on the agenda. So one of my questions is, will you be keeping a list of people that come to the rink to skate?
We will be doing the questions. We will be doing contact tracing, mask mandated inside and outside, because even though it's, you're on the rink, it's outside, but you're still in close vicinity. And as our cases keep rising, this is why it's our biggest concern. We get people from all over, all over, that come there. And it's great on a normal year, but this year is very different. And we don't want to be the reason that we have an outbreak in Proctor. Because we, I mean, right before we closed last year, we had 33 people from New York City there. And, you know, that's, that's all it's going to take. These people come here, they say they're quarantining for two weeks. Do we really know that? We just have to go by their word. And so for me and Brian, our worry is the town of Proctor and the people in it. So that's why we were wondering if we would be able to have it either only state of Vermont residents, which we'd have to ID everyone at the door, or like something like a Rutland County? Because we do get lots of people from Brandon and Pittsburgh and, you know, Rutland and West Rutland. And we don't want, we love running the rink, but our biggest concern is the safety this year.
I'm okay with it being Rutland County personally. I think Vermont as a whole is a, is a lot.
Yep.
I'm okay with Rutland County personally. However, we have to think about the fact that I, I think they need to be a Vermont resident and Rutland County, because we have tons and tons of people in Killington right now, at Killington, that are not, and they're coming from everywhere. And I, I, I know this, and I'm sure Brian does, because.
Yep.
With fuel, that it's just constant right now.
Well, that, we would, and we would put it out there that you will be ID'd before, you know, after you can pass, you know, you do the questions, we do your temperature, you don't have any of the symptoms, we need to make sure you're a Vermont resident. That's, you know, or Rutland County resident, whatever is decided with you guys. These were just the options that we were thinking of due to the fact that COVID is not going away, the numbers are rising, and we, and yes, it's an outdoor thing, but there will be, I mean, inside, it's going to have to be cleaned, like every 15 to 20 minutes, those bathrooms, everything's going to be wiped down between transition of people coming in and out. There's, so that's why it's our concern, and this is why I want to bring it to you guys, to get your opinions on the facility.
So, and there already is a sign in and sign out sheet, correct?
We, when we have been doing it, we have a list of everyone that's been, like when we did the movie night, yes, we have that, phone numbers, everything. It's going to be just like they did at the pool, but it's just, yeah, I just didn't know. And like, they did it only for Proctor. I don't think it should just be for just Proctor, because there is a lot of people that come here from like Pittsburgh and Brandon and West Rutland. But I want to leave that up to you, see what you guys think is the right answer to this this year.
Does anybody else have any comments?
I think Rutland County residents only is a great idea.
Okay. And I think, and Megan, what we'll do is, because it, what it does is it goes to committee first, and then they'll talk, and they'll go back to the select board for final approval. So after, they'll go do final approval on it. But I also think we all might want to consider, once it gets closer to opening, where the statistics are, and then maybe downsizing and saying it's only Proctor residents. If it's become like really bad in the surrounding areas. That's, that's another suggestion or option you might want to think about.
Nope. And that's, that's, we wanted you guys to be a part of this, of course, because it's your facility, but also because we don't want to go and make a decision and that someone say, well, how come the select board didn't know about this? We want everyone, this be a full decision between all of us, that this is what's going to happen. And if it does get worse, what, and our other question was, if for some reason it gets worse and the schools are closed, does that facility have to close, or can we still keep it open? Does anyone?
So the governor will come out with an executive order, and he'll, they adjust that executive order all the time. And I would imagine that would be the guiding document, at least for the most.
Okay.
Like, right now, what that says is if you have an outdoor facility, a recreation facility, you can, it can, you know, it can be open to anybody who's coming from a blue county, which is just the state of Vermont, nothing outside of Vermont is, is allowed without the quarantine time. But I imagine that we would follow that at the best that we could, and then we could make some internal policies as well. When, when we cross that bridge.
So our school could be closed, and another school abutting us may not be closed. That's the way it's being, it's based on cases this year. It's not going to be closed like a blanket like it was last year. The governor's been very clear about that, as has the guidance that's come down from AOE. So, and I'm sure, and Ben is aware of this also, that Proctor High School could simply be closed, and Proctor Elementary School could be open. So I, I don't know how that could factor into your conversation, but it, it's not like the governor's going to say schools are closed unless we have something significant. We've had schools in our, as you currently have times that they were closed, but other schools were still open.
We want to open as much as possible, if that's our option. That is our, that is our goal, and, and to be used as much as possible. But we just wanted to make sure, you know, this is, if that was an option to do just Rutland residents or Vermont. So that was what I was, wanted to come on and let, talk to you guys about.
Okay.
That would be good with Rutland County residents, but I think also when we're talking about this, I think we have to continue to revisit it as it changes.
Yep.
I, I don't think that we can just blanket it right now, because no one knows what's going to happen, or how long it's going to be. So I think we have to continue to revisit where we're at.
Yep.
That's my feeling.
I would like to say, and I, I mean, I'm interested to know how everybody feels about it. Unless there's some sort of huge change in developments, I have trust in our rink managers to, to handle, you know, anything other than something catastrophic. So I do want to, I think I can speak for the board and say that we, Megan, we trust you, and, and whatever, whatever ultimately the rink managers decide, I think, for the day to day stuff is, is fine with me.
All right. Me, or is the, what the pool did? You know, when we opened the pool, we kind of gauged it, and we, we were kind of prepared to, if things did get worse, how would we scale it back? So I think you guys, you know, could definitely do all that as well, because you were part of the pools, you know?
Absolutely. Yep, we just, I just wanted like your consensus on what was the right thing to do, just, just because, you know, how things in this town happen, and just to be as a consensus from everyone.
Okay. Thank you, Megan. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, bye bye.
Bye.
Right. Thank you.
Okay, Lyle, you're up.
Well, thank you very much.
Did we, excuse me, did we approve her, the contract?
Oh, I think that's, it's for the ice maker. It's for later.
Okay.
For the one who's in the rink, the ice.
And Brian's on a call.
Lyle, I'm going to try to share my screen whenever you are.
All right, great.
Just let me know. So Judy, do you want to introduce Lyle, or do you want me to?
Um, it's up to, I'll kind of introduce him.
Okay, go ahead.
It's Lyle Jackson, and he's with the, now the RR Chamber and Reddick merger for Regional Marketing Initiative. So I know they've come in the past as Reddick and kind of introduced, you know, their programs with us, and now because the Chamber and Reddick have merged, they've kind of done it a little bit differently, and that's why he wanted to come talk to us, to see if there's more that they could do for Proctor, and what their vision is for their strategic initiative going forward. Is that correct, Lyle?
That is correct. And Greg, I think you disabled the sharing, but maybe.
It says you're sharing your screen.
Are we sharing my screen?
Uh, says I'm sharing.
Greg, you got to let him share.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying, I hit the, hold on.
No worries. No worries.
Go for it.
Host disabled participant screen sharing.
It should be good now.
Let's try again. Well, not yet. But while we're working that out, I don't think that I'm an unfamiliar face for some of you, and I was here three or four years ago as part of Reddick. Now, as Judy was describing, Reddick and the Chamber have merged, and we are the Chamber in Economic Development of the Rutland Region, and you are members of that as a town. Thank you very much. By virtue of being members of Reddick, you are now members of the new entity. And going to look, and still not able to share, Greg.
So what if I were to make you the host? Will that work?
As long as I can give it back to you, sure.
I hope you can give it back.
Or I can stay the whole meeting, and then that would.
Yeah, and I'll go home.
It is nice to meet you virtually, Greg.
Yes, nice to meet you. Sorry, I'm not as Zoom proficient as I probably should be.
If you click on the share screen at the bottom of your screen.
Yeah, I did that. It says, do you want to share the desktop or the application?
It should say. Should say, share with all participants.
Yeah, I don't have that.
Okay. But that's okay. Because I'll just talk, and it'll be a much shorter presentation, which is probably what you wanted anyway. So that was a nice strategy.
How about multiple participants can share simultaneously?
Let's try that, yeah.
Let's try that.
Oh, you're a rock star. Okay, done. So I'm hoping that you can see welcome on the screen, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So I'll bring you through, and I will not kill you with PowerPoint presentations tonight. This is real quick. But the Chamber and Reddick came together as of Ju, September 1st. This is the, the way the both organizations were structured, and you're looking at what I looked at, which was they're the same. And we were doing a lot of the same things. And we recognized that several years ago, and we began to have one policy committee, one marketing committee. And COVID kind of pushed this down the road a little quicker than maybe both organizations were ready for, but it was the right timing. And I think you're going to see many nonprofits come together, realizing that they need to work more closely together. So you don't need to read this timeline, it's just to show you that we actually had a timeline and a strategy to put together the both organizations, and it took about four months. And now we are one entity. So the conversation started in earnest back on June 1st, and by September 1st, we were one entity. We looked at our mission statements during this process, and I won't read this to you, but they were pretty much the same. And so what was different was that now Reddick was working with bigger business, the Chamber was working with retail and hospitality, now this organization works with all economic sectors. And these are all the things that we go out and tell people, now this is what we do, that we speak with one voice, and that we have eliminated duplication, and that we have staff, a reduced staff, but an expert staff, all working in particular areas that are their areas of expertise. We do believe that we'll become more effective as a one-stop location, so that when people come in with questions, we may not have the answers, but we will find the answers for them, or people that do have the answers. We'll be communicating again with one voice, and I need to go out and give Greg perk cards, because the Chamber has perk cards, which are discount cards at area businesses, which Reddick didn't have. Well, now you get to have perk cards. So I need to bring out perk cards for you and all of the folks that work at the town. And our combined membership dues certainly will support one another. And what people then say is, well, what's this new structure look like? Again, I don't expect you to look at all this and understand the whole thing right now, this is just a quick overview. But we went from 13 different committees to six committees. And so we feel we will be more efficient, and we have 55 people involved in those committees that are all professionals in particular areas, and we feel that they will help us drive the economy forward in a positive way. So what people really want to know is, well, Lyle, how much money did you save? And so we went from six staff members to five staff members, we actually now have four staff members, and we had two locations, now we're one location. So we went from a budget of about $1.1 million to a budget of about $850,000. So that's a savings. And one of the first activities that we undertook was right when Governor Scott implemented the mask order, we ordered 50,000 masks, and we began distributing them around the county. We went to about 400 different businesses that were forward facing, and we provided them with a box of masks, so that they wouldn't have to the next day, when the mask order came into effect, they wouldn't have to turn people away who forgot their mask. We didn't want there to be arguments over that. So we delivered, and we delivered in Proctor, as a matter of fact. So why is this important? I'm going to send Greg our annual meeting. Our annual meeting was a movie, and part of that movie was in Proctor. It was filmed with a drone that a quick shot going over the marble bridge with the family and staff from Franklin's Restaurant were standing on the bridge waving at everyone. Our goal right now is to help families. And that, and you might say, well, why families? Well, ultimately, it's about the families in our region that we want to help. If our businesses are strong, our communities will be strong, and our families will be strong. So our focus is on families. So why am I here tonight? Well, we're looking forward to working with Ben Doyle at the Vermont Preservation Trust, as he works with the Vermont Marble Museum. We look forward to working with you folks as you develop plans for your town, and we look forward to continuing the regional marketing initiative. And this is an odd segue from what Megan was talking about a minute ago, to, yes, we want to have more people come to our region. Well, not right now. We would like them to come when it's safe to come, and we would like to begin that process. And I'm going to show you something here. Because we've come to you in the past, and you have been very generous in providing funds for the regional marketing initiative. I'm not sure we've ever told you how much we've raised, or how we've spent that money. You have been gracious to donate about $1,600 a year for the last couple of years, which is a dollar per person in your town. But what you're looking at right now is how we've raised money for this, what we're calling 10-year plan. And we're now about to enter our fifth year. And so we've spent about $100,000 a year on this plan. Sorry about that. Let me close that. Can you hear WCAX?
Can we what?
Can you, can you hear WCAX TV?
No. I can't.
All right, good. Because there is a commercial running right now.
Okay.
We'll just let it go. All right. So what you'll see is that we have a grant from 30 for $30,000 from USDA. And I've got to turn that off. My apologies. Okay. So you'll see that Rutland City has donated $100,000. They've actually donated $138,000, and they're about to donate another $16,000 towards the process. You'll see that in the next $81,000, that's where Proctor's money has gone in, and there are other towns around the county who have donated to this pot of money. And we can't leave out the fact that $270,000 has come from area businesses. Businesses see bringing more people to our region as a key to their success. Not right now. We want to bring them when they can come, and when it's safe to come. But just like your retirement account, you have to keep putting into it, even though times may be bad, you keep putting into it. And that's what we plan to do with the Regional Marketing Initiative. So how have we spent that money? This is how we've spent it. We have about $20,000 left in the account. And we have spent it, you'll see a large part on the Mondo, which was the company that we hired. And you'll see that there are a lot of media buys, television, Facebook, all that stuff. We are out in front of people. We created the RealRutland.com website, and people come to that RealRutland.com website, and they get information. And we're about ready to launch or relaunch the concierge service, which is where people will come to the website, they ask questions, they're hooked up with a concierge, and that person guides them through answers to any of their questions that they have about our region. The state's actually watching what we're doing, and they're considering replicating this process. So tonight, I'm here asking for funding, again. And you're going to say, well, how do you plan to spend that money? And I don't expect you to be able to read all the words on this, but what I want you to see is that we have up here, where it says lead captured, we have 5,000 emails that have come through on our RealRutland.com website. We have not done very much with those leads, but we plan to do something with them now. What we plan to do is to bring them through a funnel, and basically, we're going to shake that funnel and see if we get any over here, this says hot lead. If we get any people that stick with us and want to move to the area, they'll be hooked up with a concierge. And they will be, continue to be recycled through this process, because we're going to have 25 or so different messages that we're going to be sending out to them that are emails about our region, including Proctor and West Rutland and other areas. If they respond, great. If they don't, that's okay, because they're going to get another email, and they certainly can opt out. So they basically have three choices. Don't respond, respond, and opt out. And we're going to bring all 5,000 of those people with email addresses through this filter to see if we can reengage with them and have them come to our region. Now, the other question you might have is, and I'm going to stop sharing here. The other question you might have is, well, how's this work so far? Has anybody moved here as a result of this? Well, we know of 26 families that have moved here because of this, about 64 people that have come here. And people say, well, let's divide 64 into $450,000, that's a whole lot of money per person. Well, it's not the $10,000 that they were, the state was offering people to come, it's half of that. But those people now are here, and they're staying here, and they're excited about being here. And that's why I'm going to send Greg the annual meeting movie that we made, because it's about 27 different communities, and we highlight 27 different communities. And we interviewed four different families who have come here, one of which has been here for a really long time, for generations, and then others that are, have just moved here. Two to Rutland City, one to Killington. And I'd like folks to take a look at that, if you have a moment. It's a feel-good movie, and it's about why we're all here, and why it's safe to be here, and why we need to protect what we have here. So I'm here tonight to, with my hand out, again, whenever you see me, I'm asking for something. And tonight, I'm asking for your continued support of this effort. Even during these troubled times, we need to keep us first in line, so that when people can move here, they're coming here. Because what, the way I like to describe it, and for those of you that have heard me talk about this before, I apologize for being redundant, but our tax pie is only so big. And we keep re-slicing that tax pie, and we re-slice it, and we make some people mad, and then we make some people happy, and we do that year after year. What we need to do is we need to make that tax pie bigger. And the only way to do that is to bring more people here to help share in the costs of our communities. And we know that the biggest problem we have in Vermont has been population decline. Our businesses are telling us that, our schools are telling us that, and we need to continue to market our region. We've got, we know we've got the best place to live. We've got Killington on one end, we've got the lakes on the other, we've got trails, we've got cool stuff here. And we're asking you to continue to help us support with this effort. So I've probably gone over my time, Greg. But I'll open it for any questions you might have, and then you can kick me out of the meeting. Decide what you'd like to do. So thank you again.
Anybody have questions?
I'd like to know what specifically your organization has done for the town of Proctor.
Great. Good question. So you've been in our newsletter, we've had a highlight of that, you've been in our annual meeting. We have been in your town, visiting, of course. Specifically, what we're doing is for the region. Specifically, we have taken pictures of Proctor, because it's beautiful. Specifically, you'll go on the RealRutland.com website, and you'll see that the town of Proctor has a location on that website. So you're being treated, I guess, the same as all towns. And I love that question, because when I go to IRA, and they say, why are you asking us for $742? What are you going to do for us? The spillover will happen, because people will come to Rutland, and they may not want to live in Rutland City. But when they see Middletown Springs, or they see Proctor, or they see Brandon, they may want to be there. So what are we doing specifically for you? So what are we doing specifically for you? We're marketing the entire region, and we're not gonna leave you out.
But are you really? Because I do know about that page, because I just looked at it. And it is some little teeny furt like everybody else is. But specifically, when I'm reading what you're spending your money on, a lot of it is Rutland, Killington. And I want to know, is this what we're funding? Because maybe in the long run, somebody may buy a house in Rutland or in Proctor, but maybe they, they won't. And in the past, I've seen other groups ask us, and the marketing for Killington is much higher than it is for anything else. And it has been my experience that people that buy in Killington do not stay here and do not help our educational tax base. So I guess I'm looking for a little bit more of, what are you doing for the outskirts of, besides Killington and Rutland? Because I think we all matter too, because that's where your employment base is coming from. And I just don't see it being represented, I guess, the way I would like it to be.
Well, I'm not gonna disagree. People ski in Killington, they may not live in Killington. Killington has seen, their school system actually has grown this year by 14 families. I would attribute that to COVID. If you're reading the same things that I'm reading, there is concern about keeping people here. That of the folks that are moving to Vermont, there is a theory that a third of them will stay, a third will leave, and a third, we really need to work on because they may or may not stay. So I'm not gonna disagree with you about the attraction of Killington. I will tell you, the attraction of small towns is a positive. And COVID, quite frankly, if there's even, if there's any type of positive, people are looking to the small towns, the small communities where they feel it's safer to be. I would welcome any thoughts you have on how we can better represent you because we would like to do that. And, you know, I did live in Proctor for a few years on Grove Street. And I do remember, the thing I remember the most about Proctor, not just the people, but I remember when the baseball team won their championship. And I remember watching the fire truck drive around town for two hours. And I remember how people felt about that. And it went by my house 10 times, because when you're driving around for two hours, you're probably gonna have to go on the same street. But Proctor is a different community than Brandon. It's a different community than West Rutland. You won't get lots of people moving there, but let's say you got a few. That would be great. And it would be what you need, I would think. So I would welcome, that's a long way of saying, I would welcome input on how we could better represent you. Not necessarily today, but at some point.
Lisa, did you have something? I thought I saw your hand.
So I have a question about the education and how you have that highlighted on your page. I'm curious why private schools, particularly Killington Mountain School and the religious schools, all have a link to go to, but you don't have that for any public schools.
So that would be a recommendation. Thank you.
So that, that will be something that'll be on the cover page where it says early education and pre-K-12. That was something last year when the representatives came, and we spoke to them about our concerns. And I'm sure Carrie will remember this. We asked about that. And we submitted information to Stan that he submitted to the organization. So I'll be interesting to see when you come next year if that's been changed.
You have to say the same thing, sure. I'll be embarrassed if you have to say the same thing.
Does anybody else have any questions, comments? No? All right. Well, thank you, Lyle, for the presentation, and we'll be in touch.
All right, great. Have a great night.
Thank you as well.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Hey, moving on to good stuff. The soccer teams going to the finals, both of them, and one winning the championship, I think is great stuff, not good stuff. So that earns some kudos right there.
Definitely.
Anybody else have anything?
We didn't mention Ms. Kimball last meeting. And what did she just win? Is it Miss Teen something? But I'm trying to think what she just won. It's just not there.
I think it's Miss, Miss Junior High Vermont USA, or something to that effect.
Something to that effect. That's Brooklyn Kimball, so I thought that was pretty awesome from our little town.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to the highway department. Highway report.
Yeah, so the report is in your packet. Just a couple of quick little highlights here. You know, pretty, pretty much what we're doing right now is sort of getting things ready to go for the winter time. The guys have been chopping wood and getting the plows all ready to go and getting the equipment ready to go. We've had a couple of water issues and a couple sewer issues that we had to repair. Nothing that was horrible, but we had a pretty good sewer back, not backup, but a sewer break on a service line last Friday afternoon, which was interesting. But did a really good job. Couple representatives, or one representative from SOS was there, as well as a couple of our people, and we did a good job. They did great.
Where was that, Greg?
That was up on High Street. It was a service line up on High Street. And it was on our side. So we got, you know, it was about 3 o'clock in the afternoon on Friday. And so we were a little shorthanded. I was actually out there too, expecting to help out, and I didn't have to, because, because people showed up, which was great for me. But got it open, got it shut in like two hours, two and a half hours. Got it all patched up. They did a really great job, really good job. Some of the other things, we did have the highway department go and backfill around the building, the new addition over at the town clerk's office. That was a recommendation that Tom Hogan had made. That saved us a couple thousand dollars. So the contractor said, well, just, and you'll see that on our change order tonight. But they, they just let us do it and saved us a little bit of money there. We're still working with the mason over on our building over there to see if he's willing to do cleaning of the War Memorial. We, we put that out to bid and didn't get any interest in it, but, but we've been working with him to see if he's still interested in possibly doing that, probably come springtime. The guys went out and picked up the green up bags. There weren't a whole lot of bags, but, you know, anything's better than nothing, I guess, at this point. The lagoon liner, I think I mentioned this last time, but it's completely done, so those patches have been patched. And the baffle has been taken out and just, and it's gone. It's been taken to the local facility to be thrown away. And we're moving ahead, sort of as usual now. John and I and a couple select board members here have interviews tomorrow. So I've got two interviews tomorrow to fill the two positions that we're looking for as we're taking the utilities in-house. So one will be an operator and the other is a, sort of a split in between the two departments, and we'll have to see how that works. If, if we don't get, you know, if these people don't work out, well, we'll keep, this is still out there, it's open until it's filled. So it's still out there on the website, and it's, it's out there in the different areas where it was at before. So hopefully, these people will work out. If not, we'll just keep moving forward on this.
Advertised, Greg.
Where?
Yeah.
It was advertised in the Rutland Herald, it was advertised on VLCT, it was advertised on our webpage, on our Facebook page. And there's one more, the state has a website that, that we, they use. They always, they'll send out different jobs and stuff, they sort of send it out to everybody who's part of that. I can't remember if that's Better Roads, or it might be the Better Roads program. But they send out things that are sort of construction operator type thing related. They send that out in a mass email to people too.
Okay.
But it was advertised there, and then it was advertised two weeks in the Rutland Herald as well. And we got the two that we have are our local people. Fairly local. One's Chittingen, and one is right here in town, I believe.
That's all we got, is two applicants?
All we got were two applicants. Yep. But we'll be all right. We'll be fine. We have contingency plans for all this. Other than that, everything is, like I said, has sort of been just keep kind of getting ready for the weather. I did have a little bit of a scare with, with one, with John about COVID, but I think we're okay. He actually told me that he, his daughter, who he thought might have been around somebody with COVID, he talked to the state, and the state said, it's not an issue. You're not directly, weren't directly involved with that. So he's coming back to work, and he's gonna be required to wear a mask all the time. Well, when he's around somebody, he's required to wear a mask regardless of how far away he is for two weeks. But he's able to come back to work, which is good. And then his daughter is gonna be tested in the next few days, and hopefully, we'll get a negative back anyway, and we'll just move forward. So that's my, that's the highway report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anybody have any questions?
The other employee will be back too?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes. Yep, the other employee will be back. He was contacted tonight as well. Said, come on, you'll come back, everything is okay, so.
Salt, have we, what are we paying for salt this year?
Paying $70 a ton for salt. That was cheaper than the state bid price. State bid was 72, we're getting for 70. We've got two people on board. I've got America Rock Salt, which I wasn't excited about last time they brought the salt. And if they don't work out, I've also got, oh, what's the name of the company? The one we used last year.
Appalachia.
Appalachia, there you go. I've got them as well. So we're able to go between the two depending on the quality of the material. But right now, we're stocked up and ready to go. Thank you.
So do you want to talk about COVID policies now in conjunction with highway? Or do we want to wait until the end?
Well, I think, don't you think it kind of pertains to everybody, like even the town hall?
Well, the town hall, well, yes and no, because the town hall does have elected and hired people. So sure, we can wait to the end.
So if there, yeah, any questions, are there any other questions on that report?
I have none. Okay, is there anything old or new business anybody wants to mention? Okay. There are motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners.
I'm moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Simon's report.
Yeah, so Simon's report is in your packet. Again, it's just in there for reference. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them or get some more information on that. But I haven't really been told of any major issues. We had a couple little water breaks, which are sort of normal type things. We did have one pump station that had some electrical issues that have been taken care of. But as far as, as I've been told and what I read in the report, it's basically just sort of moving forward normally. And we are going to be starting the transition at the end of the month. The last day for Simons is going to be December 12th. And we'll be taking over after that. So we've, John has already sort of started the transition with Chris, making sure that we're aware of all the issues and all the requirements and the regulatory testing and all that has all been passed down.
Can you please run the do not flush little ad again on as many Proctor Facebook sites as you can?
Yep. It is still on there, but it's probably gotten to the bottom of the page by now.
Yes, and I just see that we had that issue again, so a little reminder.
Yep. I'll put that on Facebook and back on the webpage at the top.
Thank you. And, and maybe we can get it on Proctor Parents and just get the word out again.
Sure.
Thanks.
The tank removal?
Tank removal is scheduled to start this week. I talked with, with geez, Beldon, sorry. I talked with Beldon last week, and we finalized contract and everything, and they told me they were gonna mobilize and be out there to complete that this week. And they don't suspect it's gonna take more than a couple days anyway.
Great.
Nice weather for it.
Right, right.
Is there anything else anyone has for new business underwater? Can I have a motion to go out of sewage and into the Board of Sewage Commissioners?
I'm moved.
Second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Oh, you got the report for Simons on this too, and wastewater?
Yep, so there's the report for Simons is in there as well for wastewater. Nothing crazy here. Again, the 20 High Street repair is on there, as well as the liner repair and all that is all done. So other than that, it's just pretty much your standard operating procedures, day-to-day stuff.
Does anybody have questions on that?
No.
Anything new to add or old business? All right. Is there a motion to go out of sewage Commissioners and back to the regular board, select board meeting?
So moved. Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, Standing Committee reports. Megan said the pool in the rink meets tomorrow night at 6 o'clock, so we'll go over the whole reopening of the rink then. And then anything new from that, that we talked about, we'll come back to our next board meeting, and you guys can all have your input and approval of what was decided, so.
Well, it was nice to get a heads up on that.
Yeah.
So I can briefly talk about Roland County Solid Waste District. We did meet, did not have a quorum. So we didn't get very far. It was more informative meeting. We talked about the budget that's coming up and the SWIP, which is the Solid Waste Implementation Plan, which we now have to put out again for another. I think we have to do it again because we didn't have a quorum. And then we also talked about the river corridor, Vermont State Law business and what the Solid Waste District will have to do because it's an over three-acre impervious surface, which is quite expensive. And I did raise the question why we were paying that when the state doesn't care about the car in the creek? I did ask that. So, yeah, that's about all that happened there.
Anybody else have a committee report?
Planning Commission doesn't have a meeting in November. We will have a meeting in December.
Okay, okay. Chris, do you have any?
No, I, because of things going on, I missed the Transportation Council meeting, but I'm gonna touch base with Devon and see if there's anything, you know, anything noteworthy, and I'll bring that back.
Okay, thank you. Ben?
This is my first day back with my back, so I'm, I'm just getting back up to speed on everything.
All right. Okay, so additional items, the bills. Everybody look at the bills that were sent out in the packet.
I have a question.
Okay.
I have a question on, I think I know what the answer is, but I just want to clarify. At the, I think it's the second page near the bottom. It says Vermont Green Up, where we paid green up $100. Is that just our annual $100?
It is, it is. That's, it's a nonprofit, basically. I think they kind of manage the green up and market the green up thing. Yep.
Okay, so is it okay to sign those?
Please.
Everybody okay? All right. Thank you.
I will have them available there in the, in the morning.
Okay.
Thank you, Judy.
You're welcome. I'll probably just come in the afternoon, Greg, if that's okay when I
They'll be in the, in here in the office.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. The Otter Creek Communications Union District, CUD.
Yeah, so this is the, the resolution and the next step in the Otter Creek CUD that we had approved at the last meeting. So this is a more formal approval, I guess. So within this, it's asking for three different things. On your first page, I don't know if you saw it, it says CUD motions. So it's, this is coming directly from the language from, that everybody else is using, basically, and that the CUD would like us to do so that everybody is consistent and the same here. But the first thing is basically to Uh but the first thing is basically to to authorize the C U D um and what it's known as, acknowledge what it is. And then we have to appoint representatives and we have to represent, you have to appoint at least one with um a couple alternatives, alternates if if you want to. Uh and then along with that, you've got the resolution that I've prepared. Um that would be signed by the Select Board Chair as well as the the clerk. And then that would basically be the the final um and official, I guess, acknowledgement and approval of the of of the Town of Proctor entering into the Otter Creek C U D. So really, more anything, it's just sort of kind of getting it on paper what we had already approved at the last meeting. And then I would, and then again, we need to um appoint representatives. I have seen the list of representatives that I've seen have been everybody from, you know, the town manager to select board members to just people that are interested in in this in this concept, so.
So even people just from the community could be on it as a representative?
As far as I understand, it can be anybody as long, but they're just they're representing the town.
Uh how would we get this out there to them if they if we have a representative from the board, but or.
I think we would want to, I think we would want to point your normal representative and have that be somebody that's been involved, like somebody here. And if somebody else is interested, we can, we could put it out there and they can always be an alternate. I mean, alternates are well, are there, you know, they're they're able to participate as well. They they may not be able to vote, but they can definitely be involved.
Right, okay.
And maybe that person decides they want to be the, you know, the actual representative down the road. I don't know. But uh because this is so new, I think it would be would would be in our best interest to have somebody that's been involved in it from the beginning.
So is there anyone here that's interested in being the representative? Don't all jump at once.
Yeah, let's, so we we need to actually uh do the motion to enter the C U D. That's that's what it's asking for first.
Okay, so is there a motion to enter into a C U D?
The the, yeah, it's the uh the Communication Union District to be known as Otter Creek Communication Union District.
All moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Greg, this is gonna be uh like Rutland County towns.
That's the, I I don't know if they've really determined exactly what the 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 geographic area is going to be, but that's the intent. And from what I read, it's really it's meant for the smaller underserved communities. It's it's not necessarily Rutland. It's the the places, the smaller places that haven't got all of the resources to to do this on a larger scale. So we all sort of team together. Um you know, as as kind of more more strength in numbers, I guess.
Rutland has all the money.
Right, right. I I'd have to look on the website. I really don't know, because if when you read the literature, it talks about some of the smaller places. Um Chittenden and Brandon, Pittsburgh, places like that have all signed up for this, and Rutland is not part of that. So now that we've we've sort of acknowledged that we're going to enter into it, I just need to get the representatives now.
Okay, well, before there's a motion, is there anybody here who's interested in doing this?
No, I'll give it a shot.
Hey, anyone else?
So I will definitely act as an alternate.
Okay. I think maybe we could try to get someone from the town if if unless there's another board member or town employee that wants to be a part of it.
Or I was thinking perhaps somebody from the Planning Commission would be great. That would be a great person to to go to since they know all the zoning and the town plan and all that. So maybe if we reach out to the Planning Commission and ask them if anybody's interested.
Okay.
If no one objects, I will uh touch base with the Landon uh Mr. Landon there. He first, you know, he talked about at the town meeting there. He seemed quite interested, so.
Okay.
See if he still is, if that's all right with everyone.
So we could go ahead and appoint the two tonight and then we can bring this back at the next meeting, like the last. That's that's still.
Right. And and this basically says a motion just to approve the representative and alternative, so we can always get the third, the second alternative after.
Yep.
Okay, so is there a motion to um appoint Bruce Boucher as the representative?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so you're a representative. And is there a?
We expect big things, Bruce.
Yeah, okay.
Rod band to every home.
At least, yes.
Is there a motion to appoint Greg as the alternative representative?
All moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so we got those. Okay, next up, Town Constable Feasibility Discussion.
We got one more. Just sign the resolution.
Oh, the sign it, sorry. Thanks, Bruce.
Well.
Okay, is there a motion to allow myself and would that be Celia or you?
Yeah.
That'd be Celia.
Okay, to sign the resolution and appointment document?
All moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I can sign that tomorrow too, Greg, when I do the invoices.
I will, I will have it ready.
Okay. All right. Okay, now the Constable Feasibility Discussion.
We have a visitor here. You probably know him. Can you just state your name for the record?
I'm Kevin Longy. For whoever doesn't know me, I'm a thirty-year resident here. I'm a thirty-five-year career law enforcement officer. Um I am also the current president of the Vermont Police Association. And I actually was served as a constable over here. I'm here to answer any questions or technical things and if anybody has any questions on it.
There's a lot of nuances to, you know, to police. So law enforcement that I'm not aware of that, you know, we talked a little bit and we thought it'd be good just to to be able to answer any questions that you might have. So um a couple select, a couple meetings ago, um there was, I was asked to put together a sort of a proposal or a feasibility study on what it would look like financially, um sort of what it would look like to have a constable in town uh that would take place of the the Sheriff Department. So what I've put together is uh basically the same thing I'd put together for the water and sewer thing, and it it outlines what it would look like as far as a cost if we were to have a constable either thirty-two hours a week or forty-two hours a week. Uh the big difference being, of course, the benefits. Uh in our personnel manual, anything thirty-two hours and under is considered part-time, and so they don't, the the that person would not qualify for the benefits, the the health benefits. Um so basically what this is, is just outline sort of what it would look like um and all the costs that would be associated uh with with having a constable uh in town, either thirty-two or forty hours in a week. Uh as well as I added the uh um a little note here from V L C T that talks about how constables are, how they can be in towns and sort of what their uh what the powers are of a constable and how the select board can limit those powers. Um and that there's a requirement that um a vote of the people be had be made to allow a constable to go from elected to appointed, which was actually done March tw- March second of nineteen ninety-three. Um so that part's been taken care of. Uh but really, this is all just information for you to to find out if this something, if this is actually something that uh you would like me to do, you know, take the next step and maybe do a a little bit more in-depth uh research on as to whether or not it's feasible or not. Uh initially, it was more about sort of the money and and what we could afford as far as how many hours we could afford to to pay for. Um so yeah, it's it's just for more like more for your your information and I'd like to have a discussion and have you decide whether or not it's something that um at least on the on on the face, looks like it's something you'd like me to do a little more research on. If not, we'll we'll just leave it at that.
Any comments, questions?
Is that figure for the cruiser and everything that is? What what would a cruiser run, Kevin, equipped?
If you're looking at a, there there's new mandates. Greg and I talked about this the other day. I think some of the costs are low in this estimate. Um because they're required, you're looking now at the price of the car and probably thirty-five to forty-five thousand dollars of equipment to go into it. Between numbers, you have to have a mobile data terminal. You have to have service for the data terminal. Mobile radio, um video systems, all that. And and along with the video system, you have storage issues because you have to maintain those videos. Um so you're looking at the to equip a car, you're probably looking at fifty to fifty-five thousand anyway to buy the car and equip it minimally.
Yeah.
And I think we, I think we're at about sixty-two.
Is that for like a Ford Explorer or something? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so there is that definitely that upfront cost that it was not, you know, that's not figured in here. This is more of an annual cost to us, but.
The second point on that, if I may, is if you're going to provide the service, uh Tom and I were on a committee to look at this once. You've got to have a backup car too, because you can't say you're gonna provide the service and not be able to do it because the car's down.
Yeah, and if you're gonna take care of dogs and what have you, then you've got to have an S U V, I would think.
And I believe that's what you said. It would be like a Ford Explorer sort of a thing. I think that's kind of the normal around Vermont. Yeah. So you know, there are some additional costs and that's the next step, you know. Again, this was very uh meant to be very preliminary. If it's even remotely made any sense to to do more research, I would get involved with the nuts and bolts of this. Uh this was sort of more just the the operational costs, I guess. Um if we decide to go further, I could put together what the initial upfront costs are gonna be. Um you can get a cruiser used, I know, but I don't know if we'd want to go that way or not. Um you know, I think it's always better to have new equipment, so you're not having mechanical issues and all that. Um but there are monies in here that that once this were to get going, it would allow for replacement. There are um the expense that I put in here for uh for the the equipment, uh some of that is is to be moved forward, is that sort of savings for the next every few years. I know the radios need to be replaced. Uh the cruiser, the eight thousand dollar, part of that is a replacement fund. Um so, you know, but there is a, there is going to be a a pretty sizable upfront. Whether it's a used cruiser or a a new cruiser, there's gonna be some upfront for sure.
And then if, like Kevin says, if we're gonna have a backup, that uh you know, kind of almost doubles the the equipment figure. That's somebody out with a half a half a cruiser. And uh I'm I'm just concerned about some of the fix, who's gonna who would be be the dispatcher?
That's, again, that's a question for the next step. If if you decide, that's sort of the nuts and bolts that would have to be figured. Um I don't know, would you have ideas? We would have to hire a dispatcher.
Let me go ahead. Everybody's aware of what's going on nationally and in the state level. They actually uh the state legislature just passed, I think it was S three ten a month ago, and included in that bill is authorizing the state police to be able to charge municipalities for dispatch service. And I don't think that's gonna come at a low price tag.
Right. Now, that's my.
Last time you were making anyone new on, that would have to be a conversation to have with them.
Are we currently, though, getting charged for state police to be dispatched here because they are dispatched here?
No, the dispatch service, if you had your own person, you have to have someone to dispatch them. Sheriff's Department has an agreement with them when their dispatch is off already that they dispatch for them. But currently, you're not paying anything for dispatch service that's included in your contract with the Sheriff's Department.
Right.
If you were to have your own person, you have to have a dispatch capacity for them. And like I said, that was just authorized. There's no figures out. Well, I heard some sidebar figures, but but it's not going to be a cheap proposition for them to provide dispatch service to municipalities.
Yeah, I don't know. I it sounds though we're gonna be uh spending more money or costing us more money than what we're paying for the Sheriff's Department. Because I'm sure that, as you say, that dispatching service, you're gonna pay a premium for it. That's my big concern, you know, the.
So does anybody else have any questions, concerns, comments?
My only comment is I think we have to keep looking at other ways because I just do not feel that the Sheriff's Department is serving as well for what we pay.
But can we afford it?
So I guess the question is in front of the board is, do you want Greg to continue doing more research on this and getting some other numbers? There was a comment, and just so if no one noticed it from Phil, that uh whenever he's out, he does see the sheriff. Is that correct? And he wants to know what the town cop's gonna do for us.
Yeah, I you know, it can't be everywhere and I don't personally, I don't think we're gonna get any better.
You know, it's sounding like a a constable would be more expensive and I don't think anybody wants that.
No.
No, I I definitely don't want a bigger expense, but you know, I really, really I've really had a hard time with the lack of response and follow-through by the sheriff. And it's continuous and it's been like this for a very long time. And we keep calling them back for the same things and nothing changes. So I do have concern about that because it does not feel good to residents who call for something and get nothing out of it. It's why bother? And we're gonna end up with people taking the law into their own hands and and that's gonna be an issue. You know, I'll be quiet about the sheriff for a while. But I'll be sending everybody to you guys because it is, people are not currently happy with what we have right now and what is happening.
Well, I think it needs to be broader than just us and the select few that comment on this, because I don't think I have, I honestly have not heard a lot of complaints about the Sheriff's Department. So I would like to really see what the numbers are, you know, is there like fifty percent of the population likes the sheriffs, fifty percent doesn't? Or is it, you know, is the margin much broader than that? Bruce?
The other thing is uh then you're gonna have to have uh that fellow can't work uh you know, forty hours a week continuously, so you're gonna have to, what are you gonna do in the in the interim? You got vacations, uh sickness, uh what have you. You're gonna be without people. You can't, I don't believe you can do it with one person.
Still gonna have to have the state police covering off hours, you know.
Yeah, and that's how it typically works is you got to, you've got another agreement with the state police and did you say they they were talking about not being required to cover municipalities now?
There there is a movement on where they're trying to become what New Hampshire has and require every town to have their own law enforcement. Um New Hampshire, that requires any any town over twelve hundred people to have their own full-time law enforcement.
They think somebody can do it, uh one person can do it, Kevin?
No, I don't. I I there, if Judy, can I have a little latitude here to add a couple of comments?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um law enforcement is a necessary evil. We complain against us all the time. It's usually the same people that are complaining or the same group of people that are complaining. We can't make everybody happy and you're not gonna get that even with your own person because you have to operate under the laws that you have. A big problem we have with general complaints is that people will call and complain, but then they don't want to get involved. They don't want to sign a sworn statement, which we have to have for a lot of things. Or they say they won't come to court on a civil issue. It it's just the nature of the beast. Like I said, we're a necessary evil. And there's a certain percentage of the population that is never gonna be happy, no matter who you have doing this. That's just the way it is. Second, a couple of other thoughts to think of is. I talked to Greg the other day and with the price he's got. Figuring hourly, that's way low. Here, if you want somebody to be at your beck and call or however that wants to be, you're gonna pay a lot more per hour than what's in this proposal.
Yeah, I thought the same thing.
Yes.
You're gonna, you're gonna be. At least half again, even get anybody to start.
Yep.
So basically, basically, then. All of our ordinances and policies are pretty much. We can't enforce them. Because they're currently not being enforced, so we're unable to enforce them and we're not going to be able to enforce them.
Without knowing specifics on them, I'm sorry, let's see, I can't see. Without knowing, without knowing specifics, most of the ordinances are enforced under civil law. They're civil ordinances, which means you get a ticket at most. And the problem that you have with that is people, they want to complain, but they do not want to sign a statement and swear to it. If most of that stuff, if if the law enforcement officer does not witness it. They have to have a complaining party willing to to raise their hand and swear under oath. That this is what they saw and when it goes to court, they're willing to go to court with it. And that's a problem you get with a lot of them. And I'm not sure what you're talking about in general, but, uh, when you get into to dog complaints, people want to complain. This is just a, for instance, but they don't want to sign a statement. Um, and I heard mention of a video at one point, somebody said that, well, the video is only supporting evidence. You still have to have a signing complaintant to be able to, if if that's contested to go to court with. That answered a little bit?
Yeah. If the officer's gonna be or the constable's gonna be in in court, uh, that's, uh.
Well, that's no different than if the sheriff goes to court, Bruce. It's the same. If the sheriff goes to court, we're getting charged for it and the sheriff's not here. It's the same.
Another thing that that Greg hadn't even thought of is, um. With our current state's attorney, you need to find out, A, if she will even prosecute from a, from a constable. That is, that is wholly within the state's attorney's preview. And there's been some giggly of. Which means she's not gonna prosecute. And if you bring somebody up, train them, and then all of a sudden, they're not gonna prosecute, you're back to squared. Square one and having to find somebody else to do it. Whereas under the contract, you you don't have to, and I'm not, I'm not advocating either way. I'm just, I'm just trying to put reality. And if you have to train somebody, you're looking at. Initial training, sending them to the academy. And then two hun- two to three hundred hours probably of field training with somebody that you would have to find to be able to do that. Before they'll even be up and running. So there's, there's a lot of nuts and bolts with this and and I'm not trying to sway, I'm just trying to answer questions. What you're looking at, actually.
Yeah.
Tom and I did, we're on a study committee. Tom, was that back in two thousand fourteen?
It must be that far back, yes.
And we put a lot of time and effort. Tom and I were on it and RJ Elrich was on it. Frank Beatt was on it and I can't remember who else, but we we put a lot of time into a law enforcement study. And at the time. For what you get, the current contract was the the best bang for the buck and I don't really think things have changed that much.
I agree.
Don't you have a couple of, one, at least one officer in Rutland that the the state's attorney won't, uh. Work with?
Um, yes, there there has been one, yes. Recently and and, you know, personnel stuff, I can't comment on by that.
No, no. But, uh, you know, I think we're into into a kettle of worms if we go with this. I I'd like to personally, but.
My last, my last thought on on this too is is we're still legislators. Legislation is still in the law enforcement reform mode. They passed a couple of them. Real fast this fall. It's gonna come up again in January. Um, from the Vermont Police Association side, I can tell you our lobbyists burned my phone up many times. They're gonna keep going, so we don't know what changes are coming down the road in the next six months to a year legislatively. And as you know, at the state and the federal level, they love to let legislate mandates that are unfunded. And you're, if you have your own, you're stuck with paying for whatever those mandates are that they put through.
Thank you, Kevin. So I guess at this point.
I said, yes, thank you. That was really good information.
Any other questions? Anybody have any technical questions that I can answer?
No, but thank you, Kevin.
Yes.
Point, my question is, do we just move to stay with the sheriff's department or is there a? Um, does somebody want to move to have Greg still do further investigations into other options?
I mean, I'm, I'm good. It's not, it's not going to change. Really anything. Either way we go, other than it may cost the town more money that we don't really have right now.
Okay, so is there a, um, is there the same opinion with everybody that we don't have Greg moving forward on doing any further investigation on this?
Yes.
Yes, at this point, yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Kevin.
Yes.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate you coming in.
Yes.
For staying so quiet through the whole meeting, not even knowing you're there.
I won't tell him, don't tell anybody.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Okay, there's a change order for the office renovation project.
This is a good change order. Uh, so change order number five is in front of you. It's actually a reduction, uh, in the overall cost of two thousand and eleven dollars. Uh, this is because we had, uh, like we talked about earlier, we had the, uh, the highway guys come out and do the backfill around the building. So, um, this change order number five again reduces the overall cost by two thousand and eleven dollars. I'm asking that you, um, would allow me to sign this and and we'll move on to the the pay application.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the change order number five? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Pay application.
Pay application number six is in front of you. Uh, it has the change order as part of that. Um, we're moving along well. Tom, you can speak to this more too, but, um, things are still on par to, uh. Uh, they'll be done, I think, on the twentieth, twenty-first type thing, the twenty-third. Celia, uh, will be moving over there the week of the twenty-third. Uh, we're gonna be getting the internet and the phone and everything switched over during that week and then, uh, the movers are scheduled to come on the thirtieth. And that's when we'll officially be moved to the new building. Uh, so I'm asking that you, uh, would, uh, approve pay application number six with the change order number five included.
Is there a motion?
All moved.
Second? Colin Thayer?
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Looks nice in there.
Okay, the Rink Ice Manager contract is next.
Yes, so this is just the annual contract. Uh, nothing has changed other than the name of the town manager, basically, and the date. Uh, the amount is the same. I believe Andre Kreb is, Greb has been doing this for a few years now. I'm not sure how long. But, uh, this is just the annual contract, so, um, he's still gonna get paid the same amount in the same installments.
Prove the contract. Sorry, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Contracts approved. Thank you. The financial report.
Should not be a financial report. You didn't print the new agenda, did you? The one I sent you?
I printed the one you gave me.
Yeah, that's the one. It's a work in progress. Yeah. We had talked earlier about doing financials every, every once a month, so it'll be on the next one. Yeah.
Sheriff's report.
Uh, so the sheriff's report is in your packet. Um, just one note that's not on here. I have been in contact with. Uh, Deputy Riley, who's the one who'd be writing, supposed to write the ticket for the dog issue. Haven't gotten a response yet. I mean, I was supposed to meet up with them Friday and things just didn't work out, so. Uh, I'm not sure whether or not the the tickets have been written or not, uh, but I will find out and when I do, I will let you know.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions on the sheriff's report? All right. So open meeting law, refresher information. I know you guys got. All that information and that was one of the reasons for the upfront, um, changing of the October twenty-sixth meeting minutes.
Yes.
So again, just just refresher, um, you know, sometimes we forget things and this is just a quick refresher. Um, when we go into executive session, I I do have the, uh. The the language that we're supposed to use. Judy, I don't know if you have a copy of that or not?
Yeah.
Okay, good, good, good. Uh, and then, you know, so just let me know if if anybody's wanting to do an executive session, let me know if you can ahead of time. So that I can let Judy know what we're doing and what the language needs to look like.
Well, it wasn't so much the language of going into the executive session, it was how we handled the executive session, what we, what the outcome was.
Yeah, and well, and there was two things that we tried to do kind of at the same time and they were supposed to be separate, uh, motions, if you will. So, uh, but I just want, if if anybody wants to use a, use executive session, if you could try to get. Get that, you know, let me know ahead of time so that I can let Judy know what what to be prepared for.
Yes.
Lesson learned.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, just FYI, the information was recorded as stated at the meeting, though. So if you had wanted two motions, you didn't state two motions and I actually asked you to read from the executive session. Um, format that Stan handed to everyone at March meeting.
Right, and I think what we did, or I did probably in that meeting, is combine them. And then we came out and didn't have any decision or talk even on one of the issues, so that's where the.
Yeah.
The legal part of it came into question, so.
Yeah, the issue was not with the recording of it, it was was actually the way the language was was spoken.
Exactly. Poor communication, I think.
Well, I don't think any of us had, uh, you know, a bad intent, no.
Okay, um, so next up, we added forty-one Ormsby Avenue. Bruce, did you wanna talk to that?
Well, I under, maybe Greg can speak more of it, but, uh, I had, uh. Three or four comments, uh, the Saturday morning, uh, after that, uh. From three or four people. That live up in that particular area and they just thought it was. You know, that we really had to attempt to put the foot down on this because they they were. Kind of upset that it was still, still happening. So I guess what brought me to mention that, uh. You know, the Greg and I. But I understand he's got some more updated information on that.
Yeah, if you can just give a little background, so people don't know what's going on, they, we know they know what.
Well, so, um, on Friday, John had gone up to Ormsby. Um, and the owner had basically mowed the lawn and and shoved all the debris into the middle of the road. You know, with a mower. And so he swept it back to the shoulder and then came back a little bit later and it was out there again. And then swept it back to the shoulder and came back later and it was out there again. Um, so there was a, uh, I wouldn't call it an altercation, but there were some words that were had. The owner of the of of the of the home called me and talked to me about, uh, a lot of things. Um, it was beyond just the blowing the things into the into the road. It was about a bunch of stuff. Um, that I'm gonna have to do a little research on, but the, going back to just this issue. The owner feels that that is material that belongs to the town. And we are putting it there and that it's causing drainage issues on the property and and this and that and the other. So, um, I think this this individual felt that they were justified in what they were doing because he was. Because they were protecting their property, I think. Um, I don't want to speak too much to it because I don't totally understand it all. Um, I am gonna be meeting with this individual within the next couple of weeks, depending on how things go. Um, but having said that, well, let me, let me add one more thing. Um, John has has talked to other individuals within the town that have done the same thing. And asked them, hey, can you not do that? And everybody else has complied without any issues. Um, but this individual, you know, there's there's some other things going on here, I think, than just this. Um, and and I don't know that it's gonna stop. Um, again, having said that, it is. According to what the state has given us, it is against state statute to place things out into the road like that. Um, so, you know, I can, with your direction, I have. I can write a letter, you know, I can do a violation on it. I I don't have any problem doing that. Um, I, there is some concern by the homeowner that we are singling this person out. We are singling them out. Um, as far as I'm concerned, when it comes to blowing things into the yard or out of the yard onto the right of way. We're not singling anybody out. Well, John has talked to other people about the same issue. And they've all said, oh, yeah, I'll get it right back. Um, so. Uh, I don't think that there's really any validity between to the whole idea that we're singling them out, at least in this situation. Um, so that's sort of the, that's that's where we're at. Um, I don't think. I really don't think just talking with this individual is going to stop it from happening. I really don't. Um, but, yeah, so that's, that's, that's what it is. Bruce, is there anything else? Anybody, anything else that you know about the situation?
I I don't think that this is an ongoing thing and hope you get an hour or two, Greg.
What's that?
Hope you got an hour or two.
Oh, I know.
We've all been like.
Yeah.
What was it, June? So here's my deal on it. Same thing. How would we possibly enforce this? Because we haven't been able to. Um, and and secondly, I would ask that you also put that out. On media too, because snow season is coming and we're gonna, that snow is the same.
That that is out, that's already, that's on Facebook and it's on the website.
Yes.
That you, and everything's already out there.
Definitely need to remind.
Yeah.
Other than that, I don't know what else to do because I don't think it's ever gonna stop.
I I think it's a little bit of a slippery slope and I don't, we're kind of talking where we probably shouldn't be at this point. Uh, this is more executive session down the road possibly, but. Uh, it's just, there's so many different pieces to this that, and and there's a, there's a little bit of. I don't know. I I mean, I don't want to say the wrong thing. I don't want to say something I shouldn't, so. Uh, I don't know if there's an easy fix, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Um, you know, the, uh, there, it is, it is a violation. Um, but to Carrie's point, I don't know, you know, who would enforce it necessarily. We would send a, a. A letter and a violation to it and I'd have to look at the statute, but I imagine it would be the the sheriff again. That would be required to, uh. Uh, write the ticket or whatever was, you know, whatever was out there.
Well, if you want the history, I probably can add a little.
Well, let me, let me just throw this out there. Let's, let's follow the procedure that we have, which is at this point. If we feel we need to send a letter of violation and then worry about executive session or history like that as step two, but. I think right now we have to do step one.
We've already done.
We've already done step one, so really step two is to to send an official notice. But, uh, I mean, that's just my opinion. I don't know what what everybody else thinks, but I I think that's the logical way to 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 handle this.
Now, I think we have to do a step for sure, the next step, even if, like you said, even if it doesn't get anywhere. Showing that we're just not letting them do it, you know, it's like, we're we're taking notice of it. And then do as much, you know, push as we can, so. Cause I've seen people like mow their lawn and the grass goes all over the road, then I see them out there sweeping it all up and pushing it back into their lawn, so they know the, you know, they know the rule.
And and again, John has seen that too and he's asked those people to move it and they've had no issue.
Exactly. So I would say the next step definitely to, I don't know, send a tougher letter.
Yeah, we'll see what, how the statute reads and and what the violation next step kind of looks like and well, if that's what you'd like, if I get all of you to agree to that, well, we'll just move forward that way.
Okay, so everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
I'm in agreement with that. I just think it needs some stronger language. Maybe we need to look at the first one again or look at the first letter that was sent, because I know Stan sent a letter already.
E- exactly.
Yeah.
Well, I'll say, I will send this one. Well, I'll, I will send this one certified as well. Um, what's nice about that is if he refuses to take it, do that three times. And that constitutes our, I think, our diligence. We, we've done our due diligence on that, so we can move forward with the violation.
Yeah. Why not, uh, check with Alan? Maybe he can suggest some, or something.
Sure, and I'll check the statute first of all. And really what it'll say is that you're in violation of state statute, blah, 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 blah. And here is what can happen to you essentially. Um, and then we just need to follow up on it. Yeah.
Okay. All right. And the last thing, COVID procedures. Carrie?
Well, I just wanted to see what we were doing because it has occurred to me if one of our public works person is exposed or comes down with COVID. We, and they're around each other and there's not PPE. We essentially would not have a crew. And what if it snowed? So I just wanted to touch base, like, do we have something in place? Have we thought of this? Because I would hate that to happen for us to have a snowstorm and, oh, all of our guys are out because of COVID. And then we're looking around for somebody to come plow. Cause I, I'll shovel, but I don't think it can shovel the whole town. I just don't.
Well, Tom and I had this conversation today. And Tom, you know the names and the places better than I do, so if you wanna chirp in on this one. Uh, but essentially we talked about, there are some local contractors in town that in the past have helped us out in this situation. And, uh, what we talked about was basically I'm going to reach out to all of them, both of them, and ask them if it's, if that's something they're willing to do and get their price sheets. So we know what their cost per hour looks like and what their equipment costs look like and what their availability looks like. And so we've got them basically on a, uh, you know, as an on-call sort of thing. Uh, we would probably use them if we had a gigantic storm as well. We just couldn't keep up. We needed a round the clock service. Um, I don't know if that's what they've used them for in the past, but that's, that was sort of the, the concept that, that Tom and I came up with was to, to have these, these contractors ready to go in that situation if, if we lost our public works people to, to COVID.
I think that's a good idea.
I, I think it's a good idea, but I think there's a procedure before that. You know, are they wiping down their areas in their trucks? Because that is part of state requirement. I think that we need to talk about masks and the proper PPE so that they're protecting each other.
Right. I, I think that really sounds more like, uh, uh, what I'll do is a refresher class, like a, a safety meeting type class.
Yes.
That's specifically to COVID, PPE sanitizing type thing. Uh, I'm sure there's literature out there that I can get my hands on and just, we'll sit down and sort of do a little, and it actually helps our insurance. If we do safety classes and we sign up, we'll send that in and we can get credit for that.
Also, maybe have the guys like John and his crew do like tailgates every morning, you know? It doesn't hurt. Every morning get together and just go over it. You know, I know we've all heard it before and we all are supposed to wear masks and do this and that, but sometimes just, we just naturally don't do it sometime without thinking that intentionally, you know?
Yeah, refresher is not a bad idea at all. And I'll, I'll get with John and find out if, well, I'll get him the information and I'll just make sure he gets it to his guys. And they sit down, they talk about it and, and they're all on the same page.
Okay, perfect.
That would be great. I just would like them to protect each other and, you know, this just happened at my place of employment too. So we've had to double up on our efforts as well and not be so lenient about masks and how we wear them and touching things and.
All right. Anything else anybody wanted to add? All the new business?
Is there? I may, I, I just may or may, may or may not be leaving this week for Colorado. I probably will be going this week for Colorado, um, for my father.
Okay.
We'll know one day yet.
Okay. Thank you. Keep us posted.
You'll just touch base with Judy before you leave.
Yeah, and, and we've already had the meeting and all that, which is great, so it's, but yeah, I'll definitely have things. And I'll have my phone, even when I'm out there, I'll have my phone for email and everything anyway, so.
All right, so as far as the sheriff, we're just waiting still because I, I just wanna reiterate that this is what we're doing. We're waiting for a response because there's still the same issue.
Yes.
Changed.
Like I said, on Friday, I, I reached out to dispatch and said, can you have Riley come by when he gets here? Which is around two o'clock and I didn't, nobody came by. Um, and I've sent Riley an email a couple of times and haven't gotten a response yet either, so. Uh, cause it was my understanding was that he was the, the deputy who was gonna be writing the tickets. Um, I just haven't gotten a response yet. So I'll keep trying.
Okay. You'll let us know when you reach him?
I will.
Okay. All right. Anybody, Sydney have anything to add? Is there a motion to adjourn?
All moves.
Second? All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.